Good evening. This is the regular Board of Trustees meeting. Today is September 18th and our starting time is 6:03 PM. Please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Karime Vazquez from Colonel John O. Enzer Middle School.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. First item on the agenda, Superintendent's comments. Dr. Espinoza.
Yes, Madam Vice President, Ms. Rodriguez, and members of the Board. Socorro ISD, we continue to achieve success as a team and reach new milestones due to a large part to having great leaders on our campuses, districts, and obviously our Board of Trustees. So it gives me a great pleasure this evening to introduce our newest members to our elite leadership team. When I call your name, please stand to be recognized. We have Ms. Jennifer Marquez, who is the new Assistant Principal at Robert Rojas. Also, Ms. Elizabeth Bustamante at Desert Wind. And Mr. Roberto Guerrero, Assistant Principal at Desert Wind. Congratulations to all of our new leaders. Look forward to all the positive impact and contributions that you will make to your school community. Also want to thank our amazing teachers, our staff, our Board members, partners in education, and also our employee organizations for continuing to market and support SISD. It's pretty neat to see all the wonderful events and activities happening in our school district when I visit schools and classrooms, as well as go on social media, for example, like Twitter. And as all of you know, we have neighboring school districts with open enrollment and charter schools that are constantly targeting our community, yet we still, we still had an increase in student enrollment this year. So continue to post the amazing work of our students, our teachers, our staff on social media. Talk to your neighbors, whether you see them at Walmart or they're in the neighborhood, about the free college classes and endless opportunities that we offer in SIS. So keep doing everything that you're doing because let me tell you, it's evident that it is working because together we are educating our amazing community about the endless, endless opportunities here in SIS. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, Dr. Espinoza. Next item on the agenda, Board Honors. Mr. Escobar.
Good evening, Vice President Rodriguez, members of the Board, and Superintendent Dr. Espinoza. My name is Daniel Escobar, Chief Communications Officer for the district, and it is my pleasure to introduce tonight's recognitions. If you'll please step down to receive our honorees. This evening, we will recognize Team SISD students and employees who won the Second Annual Print Those Picks Photography Contest. These talented artists were among 300 students and employees who submitted prints of their favorite photographs taken on their cellphones. Their work was showcased at an exhibit and is on display here at the District Service Center for others to enjoy. Congratulations to the winners of the 2018 Print Those Picks Contest. In the Student Division, first place from Enzer Middle School, Karime Vazquez. Second place goes to a student from Puente's Middle School, Iseniu Turk Francis. And in third place from Isay High School, PJ Hernandez. And winners in the Employee Division from Guidance and Counseling, first place winner, Kim Dunlap Flores. Second place goes to employee from John Druken School, Ben Vincent. And wrapping up our awards from Isay High School, Veronica Chaparro. If we can have you all back up to the front for your photo with our trustees and superintendent. And just a quick note that the photos taken by our district photographer, Mr. Largo, are posted on the district website. There is a camera icon on the bottom right-hand corner which links to our district SmugMug account, and all of these photos will be available for free high-resolution download. Taking pictures with cellphones of the cellphone winners. That's awesome. Congratulations. Oh, one more, one more. Congratulations once again. And that concludes our recognitions for the evening. Thank you.
Consider Approval of Generation Texas Month Proclamation, October 2018. Ms. McCabon.
Good evening, President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, and members of the Board. The Higher Education Campaign Generation Texas is a statewide movement focused on a culture of college and career readiness for the most successful generation in Texas history. This evening, I have three individual students that are going to be reading the proclamation for Generation Texas Week. And sorry, I guess it's Ms. Rodriguez there. I didn't even look and see. We have Sophia.
Yeah, exactly alike.
And Dofenbarger, fifth grader at Desert Wind, Carlos Castro, seventh grader at Hambriq, and Savannah Dofenbarger, an eleventh grader from Americas High School that will be reading the proclamation.
Proclamation Generation Texas Month, October 2018. Whereas Texas Education Code, Chapter 29.911, requires each middle school, junior high school, and high school to provide students with information about higher education options. Whereas the mission of Socorro Independent School District is to maximize our children's academic, artistic, and social skills.
Whereas the mission of Socorro Independent School Guidance and Counseling Programs is to provide a comprehensive developmental guidance and counseling programs that will maximize the academic, personal, and career competes of all students so that they may realize personal post-secondary goals. Whereas students who attend institutions of higher education attain a wide range of personal, financial, and other lifelong benefits.
Whereas the demand for graduates of higher education globally has increased and will continue to grow. Whereas the counselors, faculty, and staff of Socorro Independent School District campuses realize the importance of educating students on higher education, including higher education options, admissions requirements, availability of financial aid and financial aid requirements. Therefore, we do hereby proclaim October 2018 as Generation Texas Month.
Ms. Rodriguez, Dr. Espinoza, and members of the Board, we ask that you accept this proclamation as read.
Motion.
Second.
Motion was made by Mr. Gandara, seconded by Mr. Guerra. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. McCabon. Thank you, kids. Next item, Consider Approval of National School Lunch Week Proclamation, October 15th through 19th, 2018. Ms. Chenowski. You don't look like Ms. Chenowski.
No, I don't.
See, now you all know how it feels.
Good evening, Vice President Rodriguez, Dr. Espinoza. Yes, next month is going to be the National School Week, Lunch Weekend. Without further ado, and I'll probably mess it up, that's why Mr. Malsi is going to come up and explain it a little bit better.
Good evening, Vice President Rodriguez, Dr. Espinoza, and members of the Board. Thank you so much for allowing me to present this proclamation to you. The health and well-being of our children is vital to the success of our nation. When our nations have their basic needs fulfilled, they can better focus on succeeding in school and in life. During National School Lunch Week, we recognize the benefits that school lunch programs offer to our communities and to our nation. The Congress created the National School Lunch Act to safeguard the health and the well-being of our nation's children. More than seven decades later, dedicated Americans continue to work to ensure the nutritional health of our greatest treasure, our young people. During National School Lunch Week, we recognize the food service professionals, school administrators, community members, parents, and all those who dedicate themselves to the health of our schoolchildren. So with that, I would like to introduce Azainia Ware. She is from our newest school, Carrasco Elementary, and she will be reading our proclamation today. Mrs. Azainia.
National School Lunch Week official proclamation. Whereas the National School Lunch Program has served our nation admirably for over 60 years through advanced practices in nutrition education. And whereas the National School Lunch Program is dedicated to the health and well-being of our nation's children. And whereas the National School Lunch Program has been joined through the years by many other excellent child feeding programs. And there is evidence of continued need for nutrition, education, and the awareness of the value of school nutrition programs. Therefore, I do proclaim the week of October 15th through 19th, 2018, as National School Lunch Week. And I encourage all residents to become aware and concerned about their children and their own nutrition habits in hope of achieving a more healthy citizenry for today and the
I ask for this approval of the proclamation as read.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion was made by Mr. Ayub, seconded by Mr. Gandara. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And you do know we only approved it because it was you reading it, right? Next item on the agenda, Consider Approval of Texas Education Human Resources Day Resolution. Mr. Campoya.
I thought he was going to read it.
Good evening, Vice President Rodriguez, Dr. Espinoza, members of the Board. I'm Rudy Campoya, Chief Human Resources Officer, and I'm here tonight, as in previous years, to request your approval for designating October 10th, 2018, as Texas Education Human Resources Day. Governor Abbott has proclaimed this day as a Texas Education Human Resources Day. This proclamation is in recognition of the vital role that human resources professionals play in implementing effective practices for the hiring of highly qualified and effective staff aligned with our strategic direction number three. I do have one of our students, Andrea Moreno, fifth grader from Alfida Chavez, who will be reading the resolution for you.
Good evening, Board of Members of the Board. Socorro Independent School District Texas Human Resources Day Resolution. Whereas the Human Resources Division is instrumental in recruiting, selecting, resourcing, and retaining quality staff in support of providing an excellent education for all students. And whereas human resources plays a key role in fostering satisfaction and loyalty among employees by aligning for professional growth and development and keeping employees informed about policies, working conditions, compensation, and benefits. And whereas human resources monitors and manages current and workforce trends, organizational culture, legal and legislative trends, and ethical and social responsibilities. And whereas human resources is an important part of the district's leadership and is vital to overall productivity and efficiency of the district's workforce. And whereas human resources is a valued and respected department that sustains the district's most important asset, its people. Therefore, the Board of Trustees of Socorro Independent School District does hereby resolve that October 10th, 2018, will be observed as Texas Education Human Resources Day throughout the district. The Board also encourages students, staff, and parents to express their appreciation to our human resources, team members, for their dedication and commitment. To Socorro ISD employees and students, thank you.
Thank you.
So this time, we're asking your approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion was made by Mr. Roncada, seconded by Mr. Guerra. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Andrea.
Thank you to the students who read our proclamations. We appreciate you, and thank you so very much. Next item on the agenda is Open Forum. We greatly appreciate those individuals who have requested to speak to the Board during Open Forum or in regard to a specific agenda item. We are bound by certain time constraints in order to cover all the items on the agenda and therefore must limit the presentations to five minutes. Please respect the rights of others in your presentation. By law, the Board cannot take action or discuss any item which is not posted on tonight's agenda, but we will give all presentations our serious consideration. Thank you. Let's proceed to Open Forum. First person, Ms. Deborah Herbert.
Good evening, Vice President Rodriguez, Dr. Espinoza, and members of the Board. My name is Deborah Herbert, and I'm the Vice President of the Socorro Education Association. And first of all, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you about TSTA and SEA's Vote Education First campaign. As you're well aware, education funding has continually decreased over the past several years, and as a state, Texas spends $2,300 less per student per year than the national average. That's a loss of $1.8 million if an elementary school has 800 students, and for a high school of only 2,500 students, that's a whopping $5.7 million. Those numbers are just for one elementary school and one high school, and of course, we have many more schools than that. This information really hit home when I attended a finance meeting yesterday evening where they were discussing how many of our budgets have the, we have the students that we need to educate, but we're not getting all the funding that we've gotten in the past from our state. These numbers that I talked to you about are just part of the reason that Socorro Education Association, SEA, and TSTA, the Texas State Teachers Association, are asking that school board members support public education and vote education first by encouraging our schools in the Socorro District to refrain from holding any non-critical meetings or extra after-school activities on Election Day, which is November 6th of this year. The campaign is a nonpartisan campaign. By leaving our Election Day free of extra activities, we allow parents, teachers, students, and other community members time to vote their choice in the upcoming elections. We understand that there might be volleyball games or band rehearsals and other after-school activities that have been scheduled, and we're not asking that any of those things be canceled. We're just simply asking that our district, Socorro ISD, be aware and show support for our students and schools by allowing everyone who can vote, let their voices be heard in support of public education. So we're asking that schools not schedule conferences, faculty meetings, or other events that would keep people from the polls, including our teachers, that would be, lack of a better word, stuck at school. We hope that as a district, we can get behind this like we support, we supported going and getting out the vote during our bond, and we can show the state how important public education is to us and to our community. I believe that Carrie Pugh, the NEA Political Director, said it very well. She said showing up at the ballot box is the best way to ensure students, educators, and public schools get the resources and the support they need. In state after state this year, we've seen what happens when educators band together and demand better schools for their students. So let's be sure to keep up that momentum nationwide and elect candidates in November who will be champions for public education. Remember, this is a nonpartisan campaign. We're simply asking that the Socorro School Board in our district keep Election Day free from non-critical school-sponsored activities so that people have the time to vote their choices in the upcoming elections. Our students might not be able to vote, but you certainly can be their voice at the ballot box. Thank you again for your time and consideration of supporting the TSTA/SEA Vote Education First campaign. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Herbert. Next, Ms. Angelica Soto.
Good evening, Vice President Rodriguez, Dr. Espinoza, and members of the Board. I am the President of the Socorro Education Association. As you heard from Ms. Herbert, our union is taking a proactive stance to get the vote out for candidates who will support public education by funding the school districts so that they can provide a quality education for all students regardless of their zip code. Our region has participated in lawsuits against the state, and unfortunately, the judiciary in this last round sided with the state in saying that they are providing the minimum to satisfy the requirement in the Texas Constitution to adequately fund public education. We know that. On the contrary, our current political leaders are searching for ways to take money from public education to fund charter schools. To add insult to injury to the taxpayer, the current leaders are shifting the burden of funding to property owners as TEA is now asking for even less money for the schools. Public education is the best way to ensure that our democracy thrives through an educated citizenry. We hope SISD will do its part to encourage the community to come out and vote for candidates who truly put their money where their mouth is for public education. After all, it is very difficult to pay employees what they are worth if the school district is underfunded. As our national affiliate, the National Education Association's motto, the largest union in the United States, has as a motto, "Great public schools for all students." We cannot do right by our students if we cannot provide the resources needed to make sure that they get the education they deserve. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Soto.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, District Reports. Annual Investment Report for Fiscal Year 2017-18. Mr. Renee Vargas.
Good evening, Vice President Rodriguez, Dr. Espinoza, and members of the Board. My name is Renee Vargas. I'm Director of Business Services. And as required by Board Policy CDA Local, I'm here tonight to present to you the Year End Investment Report for 2017-18 fiscal year. This report will focus on three areas: investment yields, earnings, and balances. On the screen, you will see the information on the average monthly yields for the 2017-18 fiscal year. With respect to investment yields, the rates started at ranges of 35 to 124 basis points for the investment pools and date basis points for the Wells Fargo repo account. The administrative has moved toward longer maturities to lock in into higher yields for certain funds as exhibited by Texas Term. This is especially true for the Debt Service Fund whereby funds are not needed until the bond payments, which is in February and August. During this period, a long-term, investment in long-term Texas Term matured, and the excess funds were not reinvested until late March. The rates increased in the investment pools to the second quarter to between 105 to 125 basis points. And in January through March of 2018, the investment yields for the pools continued to increase to a range of 129 to 224 basis points in response to several interest rates hikes by the Federal Reserve. In the final quarter, you can see that the investment pools saw further increases depending on the pool of 32 to 39 basis points. The consensus is that the Federal Reserve will raise rates several more times in 2018 and two to three times in 2019. Therefore, we project that the interest yields will continue rising for the upcoming fiscal year. Okay, with respect to interest earnings, as you can see on the slide for the Texas Pool and First Public Investment Pools, there are general increases over the last year in food service and general fund, interest and sinking fund, and construction accounts. While there is a small negative amount on the 2006 bond account, and that's because of the principal construction balance that was respectively in that category decreased while the interest yields increased from the prior year. Here you will see the interest earnings for Logic, Texas Term Daily, and Fixed Maturity Investments. The district realized approximately $3.7 million in interest earnings for all funds. This is an increase of $2.4 million from the prior year. This increase is due to higher investment yields and receiving the first tranche of the 2017 bond proceeds. Finally, what is illustrated are the investment balances for the entire year. The district started with a year with, started the year with a principal balance of $192.9 million, and this decreased to the, to the end of the first quarter to $135.5 million. This is primarily due to the fact that the district does not receive a state revenue payment in August, and we have to draw down investment balances for operational cash flow needs. This amount increased to $194.7 million in the second quarter due to tax collections in late November and throughout December. The balance further increased to $410.4 million in the third quarter due to the remaining tax collections in the spring months and the receipt of the $200 million from the first bond sale of the 2017 bond program. The investment balances finally decreased by $38 million in the last quarter, ending with a balance of $372.3 million. In conclusion, the administration will continue to utilize investments and pools and Wells Fargo repo account for investment purposes, as well as utilize longer maturities for funds that don't require immediate cash flow needs. And we will endeavor to increase investment yields while minimizing investment risk. Are there any questions I may answer?
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Vargas, can we go back to slides?
Is there an investment rule that says the better the interest or the bigger the interest earnings are, the smaller the font gets? I'm just kidding, sir.
I was going to say, that's a good one.
Thank you. Motion to approve.
Second.
You had them all poised.
Second.
Is this a, this is just a district report? No. No action necessary.
I couldn't see it. I didn't know what to do.
Right? Dr. Espinoza was sitting here trying to make the screen bigger.
Maximize. Great job. Thank you, Mr. Vargas.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Vargas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Vice President Rodriguez, Dr. Espinoza, and members of the board. This is a report on the facility and construction for the last month. We met earlier this month to review the report, and then this is the executive summary. The first school is the, your report starts on page 21, 22 of your booklet. The first report is Carosco Elementary School. We are moving into Phases Two and Three. Phase Two is supposed to be complete in October, and that is still on schedule. Possibility of being completed a little bit ahead of time, and I'll show you some pictures here in a minute. And then Phase Three would be complete in the, in November with the total project being completed at that time. We also are continuing to work on punch lists and warranty items on the first phase, which we opened this past July. As you can see, the play fields are being established, and water is being applied to that. The lower picture is the corridor hallway in the admin area. You see that it is almost complete with the exception of some tile and maybe some plank, some painting, and some flooring. Here we have the multi-purpose area on one screen, and then the, the stage area or the fine arts area on the other one, which are also a part of Phase Three. The second one is Socorro High School. We are gonna have a review of that project in two days, on Thursday. We'll have a schematic presentation at a board workshop on that at that time. New Elementary 30, this is some aerial. You can see that we are doing a lot of site work, preparation on some foundation, doing a lot of density tests. We had the groundbreaking ceremony last month, and it was turned, turned out real well, and we continue to make progress on Elementary Number 30. Some additional photographs of the site work. Mountwood High School, we had the first community meeting back in latter part of August, and it was conducted with about 50 to 60 individual participating in the design charrette, and we gathered the information. Administration will be reviewing that with the architects next week, and we will continue to refine that and look at that and bring that forward for an additional meeting with the community and, of course, to the Facility Committee meeting. The other two high schools, Americas and El Dorado, we are working to schedule those probably sometime in October or in late fall to conduct those charrettes and community input meeting. The Student Activity Complex Two, we are continually working to obtain the remaining 15 acres for that project, and that project should start after we receive that property into the design, and we will be bringing that forward to you for review. The multi-purpose rooms are coming along. We have met and picked out some sites with all of the administrations and determined what the best site for the multi-purpose room would be. There are three schools that we had multiple sites. We are going back, and we are scheduling meetings with those administrators to review that with them again. In conjunction with that, the architect and administration has conducted initial reviews with our fire marshals from the city of El Paso and are meeting with the fire marshal from Horizon, I think it was either today or tomorrow, and we are scheduling the fire marshals for ESD Two, which is the Lower Valley, and will review those locations with them and get any input from them and incorporate those in the design. The new middle school site, we discussed this last week, or last, last month, excuse me, and we are putting out a letter of an intent to put an offer in for that land as we presented to you, to the Executive Committee last month. At this time, we're gonna have a little bit of, a little presentation on the support services, the technology facility. And at this time, I would ask Exago Architects to come forward. I think we have represented, and I'm gonna let him kinda conduct a quick schematic design of this facility and walk you through where we have conducted multiple meetings with Mr. Reyna and his staff, staff to review the technology structure in addition to this building and where we're at today, and so we can proceed into design development and then ultimately, hopefully, start construction late this summer or early next fall.
Good evening, Vice President Rodriguez, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. My name is Eugenio Mesa. I am a principal of Exago Architects, a local firm here in El Paso, and proud to present the product of our work for the past two, three months that we've been meeting with staff in the technology building. We're really excited about this building and about what we can accomplish on this campus and also with the staff and improving the district services. When we started, we looked at the possibility as to where to locate the building. We had two alternatives, and we talked to staff as to whether we wanted to take the opportunity to improve the entrance and the entrance experience to this facility and also making this building look like a complex and not just like an addition. So we looked at different alternatives of different sites, and it was chosen then to take advantage and create an explanada in the front where you could have a kiss and ride that would help both buildings drop off area and also help both buildings communicate on the ground floor and have more of a campus feel rather than an addition or an expansion to this building. Looking at the amount of landscaping that you had, that you have right now currently in front of your building, we thought that this was an opportunity to create an oasis. We were told about the annual event that you have in the back of the, of the house where you have the barbecue with about 600 people and so on. So we thought that rather than being in the western exposure where you probably have some challenges with the sun and, and the heat, although you probably have pretty good views of the valley, that we had the opportunity to create an oasis in the front of the building. And not only with that, bring the opportunity to have this event there, but also create a warmer, cooler, and I mean in the, in the, in the weather sense, the entrance to the building. And then the location of the building as to how to bring this oasis, which there was a concern of as to, oh, is this oasis gonna be all grass and, and, you know, maintenance and things like that? But we looked at different venues like this one at Rice University where you have chat, but you have a lot of shade, and you have a little bit of water, and that way you can create this kind of an oasis without having to have the, the burden of all the maintenance that comes with it. But also, we wanted to bring that oasis inside the building and so that the building would have a green and light environment. So we brought an atrium that would go and divide the building. So that brought the oasis from the entrance into the building, and that way we could have that kind of an experience. So we came up with a site plan, as you can see here, and just to give you, right now, we removed the fire lane that goes in front of the building from east, from north to south or east, northwest to southwest. And we looked the, this fire lane around the building, and we added some parking for this staff that would be in this place, but also we added some parking in the back of the building that would be also helpful to board members as they come in for this meeting. So we have that oasis that we represent with the multiple trees that would be very close together so you can provide the shade like the picture that we showed you. The building is 50,000 square feet on different departments, and you have a very public area, a training facility in the ground floor where you have a lot of conference rooms and places like that, training shops and a flex, a couple of flexatoriums, but overall is the 50,000 square feet. And however, you have, on the second floor, you have the NOC, which is gonna be your, basically your brains that stores all the data here, and that has to be secured and has to have very access controlled on the second floor. So we separated the floors that way so where you have the very public environment in the ground floor and the more private or more service-oriented environment in the second floor. So what we have on the first floor is, I mentioned to you earlier, a couple of flexatoriums, and we're told that sometimes you have events that have a lot of people, and sometimes you have, to have the flexibility of not having that many people. So if you see the, those, the blue large blocks that you see with the seating, that is, one is white and one is dark, those are two flexatoriums. And the walls that are in between them, the floor is flat, so the seating removes itself. They are telescopic, so that in a way that you have one big room, but in addition to that, the wall that goes into the atrium also can be removed, so there's like if you had four of those. And the idea is to be able to have over 350 people in that, in that place in multiple kinds of seating arrangements so that this would be as flexible as you could be. And this was a creative way of having what originally was thought of four flexatoriums of having only two and reduce the size of the building and using the atrium not only as a foyer for all the multiple activities, but also as part of the flexatorium. We have three computer labs, a library, multiple conference rooms, and a small cafeteria or kitchenette. That, as you can see, it goes into the oasis, so the idea is that that area really interacts with the green environment. It has access to it, and it has pedestrian access to it and also to the existing one that you have in this building. And in the back, right next to the orange block, you have where you receive and you prepare all the computers that are used in the service. Going into the second floor, that's where you have most, most of the departments, and, and not to be bore you with, with all the different departments since you're familiar with, you have PIMS, you have Instructional Services, to name a few. And so what you have is a very high-tech environment where you will have open offices with very collaborative spaces that are shared. We have what we call phone booths where you can go inside. You have multiple rooms where you can really share and write on the, on the walls and write on, on glass as your programmers work on your systems. So this is a very dynamic and very open environment where you, you can see, you see all the furniture, but there is very few walls, and that's really the new way of collaborating and working in, in, in this new millennium. Looking into how this building would look, is, this is the eastern, southeastern facade, and it's basically what you see where the car is, the entrance to your existing building, and it's a very high-tech building. And basically, what we concentrated all the glazing on this, not only because it has the eastern exposure, it goes to the oasis, but the western exposure is the one that has very little walls because it's your flexatorium and you have your NOC and areas that don't require any windows. So we basically have all the glazing on this side of the building so that interacts with your existing building and as the entrance. And the idea is to create that entrance that would only help, that would help not only the new building, but your existing building. This is a view of the building and the cafeteria. You see that reflective glass, but basically, it's as if you were sitting in that oasis that I mentioned to you earlier, where you could have in the future your barbecue in a much cooler environment. This is a look at, you see on the left-hand side is a glimpse of the entrance of your existing building and the building in, that we're working on. And that's pretty much it, and if you have any questions, please let me know.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes, sir.
It's 50,000 square feet. Is that 25 and 25 roughly?
Roughly. Yeah, it's not exact, but it's very much.
In the upstairs, on the second floor, how many people is that supposed to accommodate? How many workspaces? Or how many people?
I don't go from, I can go from top of my head, but it's over 100, 125 people.
And how many people do we have in that area now?
The programming out from Mr. Reyna and his team, there was 85 people from the valley that we were gonna move up, so we got that amount of space, a little bit of that's.
The architecture, Mr. Aintin, I have had this discussion on other projects before. Is this gonna be complementary to this building, or is this building gonna sit out there like a sore thumb? Because what I see here is two totally different architectures, and the little bit I know about architecture from Mr. Aintin is you all either do complementary or contrasting or something, and if it's gonna look like, we got, doesn't look like a campus, I don't like it.
We are trying to accomplish, look like a campus, and what you have is those solid panels in between the glazing is similar to what you have right now. So that's the idea, is to complement the existing and using the same materials that you have right now. You have a very industrial-looking building, which tilt up, and we think that we can, we're not suggesting to do tilt-up concrete walls, but however, have, use a material that would look close to it, and the glazing would be complementary to what you have right now.
Because we don't have reflective glass at this point. We have regular windows in this building.
We came in and had a film on the inside upstairs.
Okay. Now, are you gonna do complementary colors? Because obviously, this is just an illustration, but will the colors be complementary?
Well, we, we have to work with staff and with you and everything, and the attempt is for it to look like a, like a campus, so it would be complementary. The idea is that the glazing and the aluminum reflect the high-tech feel of the, of the use of the building, yes.
Yeah, see, that's kinda my concern. We wanna build this beautiful, high-tech building in the middle of a warehouse, in next to a warehouse building, and is this gonna complement us a campus, or is it gonna just stand out there like a beautiful building, and then our other building looks old and worn, and it's a new building?
As an architect, I like to think it's gonna be more beautiful in this one. I hope that, that you feel like the same way.
As far as it being a high-tech building, have you incorporated any high-tech functions into the building as reference to energy use and, and energy generation and those types of things?
Yes, we have, we have talked about that, and we are, we are investigating two solar system manufacturers or company vendors, and then, you know, we have talked about that and to incorporate that.
How many parking spaces are we gonna gain? Because obviously, with this building, 85 people alone coming up, and then it looks like there'll be a lot of area for training, we're gonna have more people here. How many parking spaces did we gain?
Don't hold me, but the perimeter up on the top, around the back of the building, and then, of course, behind here, I think it's a little over 120, maybe 130 spaces. Do we have a pointer on that? But to the right of the entrance, that's our. But to the right of the entrance, that's our property between the two entrances. The temporary parking that we have now where this building's going to go, we're going to provide temporary parking, overflow parking in that area.
We don't have many left over to pave it?
We don't know yet.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Mr. Ganderah? Mr. Najera?
No, Mr. G first.
Mr. Ganderah?
It's beautiful, I love it, that is, that is awesome. One suggest, well, two, no, one. Well, I mean, Mr. Eington already know what I'm thinking. The other thing is I really suggest that we move our meetings over there and kick the, kick technology over here. Now, it's a beautiful building, that is, I like the greenery, that is awesome, I mean, anything like that that makes it stand out is beautiful. I really, I mean, it's, it's inviting, I like that. I like that there's a lot of green, that, that look that's getting, that you're trying to make it come out. I'm hoping what I'm seeing in my head is what I'm going to see one day out there. I mean, it's beautiful, I mean, also when Mr. Eington is cooking, you know, they're going to have some trees out there, they're not, you know, in the back, but it, it's beautiful, I really do like it, that is, that is awesome, it really is. That's it.
Mr. Najer?
So, Ms. Eington, the entrance, I guess in the center of the entire lot, the one that's right here in front of us.
Yes.
We're not going to lose that entrance, correct?
No, it's, it's.
There's just a slight reconfiguration there in those parking spaces to the right?
As it comes in, yes.
Yeah, okay, what about, what about cost of construction? I mean, I see all, like the windows, you know, and I imagine that something like concrete, the tilt-up is less cost-wise, so, I mean, while certainly I want a beautiful building, you know, I don't, I don't want a beautiful building at the expense, like I think this building is appealing to the, it has curb appeal, especially when you look at the warehouses around it, I know that's not hard, but, because those are warehouses, I mean, you know, it's a door up front and the rest of it is concrete walls, right? We've got some design features to this building, et cetera, and so, I guess I share Mr. Ayu's concern about, about the windows, you know, are we going to spend too much money on making a building that certainly looks, looks beautiful, you know, but, but does it need to be that extravagant? I mean, are we, because more important than anything, we want function, you know, and if we can get, you know, all the attractiveness of the building as well, you know, but I guess sometimes people build houses or amazing buildings, et cetera, because they're thinking of when they're going to sell it, right? We're not selling this building, you know, it's a building that's going to be functional for us and while we still want it to look beautiful, you know, are we sacrificing the possibility of paving the overflow parking lot because, you know, we're spending an extra five, 10% to add all this glass on the building? So, tell me about cost, what, what, what?
Well, that's, that's the reason why it's called design, we're in schematic design. We have, we are just now starting to look at preliminary cost and if, if it doesn't come in to our original budget, then yes, we have to cut back and we have to look at alternative stuff. But that's why it's called design, it's better to do it now as opposed to the first wall goes up and then we figure, well, we're, we're $10 million over budget, which we won't be, but, you know.
Yeah.
But we, you know, we're looking at the cost and we're looking at the systems and we're studying that now.
Okay.
You know, so, that's why it's designed at this stage.
My other concern would be, again, with the windows, you know, I used to have a house with huge windows up front and I could never keep that room, room cool, you know, and so, certainly, and you know, that the house wasn't that old, it's just, you know, when you have 110 degrees outside or, all right, over 100, plus the concrete reflection, it does get pretty hot, you know, so.
My pointer doesn't work anymore, so I busted that. But I think this building is going to help provide some shade factor to our existing building.
Okay.
And, you know, and creating a courtyard, you know, or what the architect calls an oasis, you know, out there will help soften some of that, you know.
Not like the, what is it, the Aria Hotel in, in Vegas that reflects the sun so intensely that it melts stuff in the pool area?
I think that's a myth.
Huh?
I think that's a myth.
Does it really do?
I've seen pictures of it, I don't know.
That's because Gary won't like. The, what we get to see, this is the design phase, you know, and, and I too agree that the, the pictures are beautiful, especially Mr. Ressa's car parked right up front.
I'm surprised Mr. Rain hadn't seen that, because it's not the black Chrysler 300, it's Mr. Ressa's car at the right side.
So, whenever the design is actually completed, will we get to see renderings of it, you know, maybe and visually, you know, see how, how it does complement the existing structure?
Yes, we, you know, we're, we're progressing to, you know, further that design and to actually go into the actual individual rooms to start laying out those and then, you know, also looking at the budget. So, yes, I will be reporting monthly on various, you've seen the initial concept plans, one of the first slide that was shown, you know, so you'll, you'll start to see more and more as we progress.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Mr. Wenzamis and then Mr. Ganderah and then Mr. Ayu.
Yeah, Ms. Eington, what type of security are you going to have for the bolt? Is it to deny access to the cyber access?
Yes.
It's top secret. We can't talk about it here.
Okay, the NOC is up on, on the second floor, the slide that is showing up there. If you look in the middle of the, of the slide above, between the, the light green area and the, the light blue, there is a door there, that is a secured entry that will only allow by card ask, access to that. So, it's going to be, you know, Fort Knox access to the second floor. Yeah, and then we've got other doors beyond that too and they're all going to be, you know, through an access card. So, we, we've taken security and, and looked at that as a, a part of this design.
Is there going to be windows around that area or is it going to be a bolt?
In the NOC, in the NOC area?
Yeah.
No, it's.
It's a vault, it's totally enclosed.
Thank you.
Mr. Ganderah?
Can you take us back to that, the overhead picture of the courtyard and the whole?
The site plan?
Yeah, the site plan.
Where is it?
Right there. You know, when, when you drive in, like when we, like when I drove in today, you see this building and, you know, it's still nice, but it still looks like one of the buildings across the street, because all you do is you got a parking lot, you park and you don't see nothing other than the glass doors up in front, that's it. You know, for us being, this has been our building where everything happens for this district, you know, and you see this picture now, it's inviting. You know, you've got that greenery out in front, it looks inviting. You know, sometimes when you get in, you see some people get here, they're like, oh my God, I'm here at the DSC. You know, you wanted to build a, you know, get here, see people outside, because you know, right now, during the summer months, even during winter months, nobody's ever outside here, other than you're parking your car and you're walking straight in, you know. No one eats here, I mean, if they do, they eat in their office or in the cafeteria or they go out to you. It'd be nice to have something out in front where people, you know, you see people out in front and it looks inviting. I like this, I really do.
Thank you. We, we, we were talking with child nutrition and we've got a lounge, I wish I had a pointer, the lounge in the existing building is that white, there you go.
Yeah.
We've got that.
Yeah, the lounge is, is on this side, yeah, right in front of the super, the soup offices.
Yes.
I'm glad the audience can see it.
Right?
Okay, now, let's see, that's the art of this.
We can't see it.
You can't see your pointer.
Your pointer.
No, you just, wait.
We got it, we got it.
No, just, no.
The audience can see it, we're good.
And then, the other lounge area is in, in the oasis or the courtyard, so, we are talking with child nutrition and I haven't really talked to the architect yet, is that we, how can we set up some type of cafeteria or lunchroom or something? And then we have all that exterior space that he showed the slide of Rice University that we could have benches and tables and stuff outside. And that building, the new building provides shade structure for that, so, we're looking at that.
I mean, it's, again, it's, it's, when you see other buildings, like when you go to, like I've seen Isletas, you know, we've all passed by there, you know, you go to El Paso, and I think El Paso's building, new building as well, right? I don't know how theirs is going to look, but you know, you look at the old one, you look at Isletas, I mean, this, I mean, nothing's inviting, I mean, I'm sorry, even ours, I don't see it inviting, I see the parking lot and a door to walk through.
When we did this building, we've been in, in March of this year, was 10 years, so, back 11 years ago, 12 years ago, when we were designing this building, there was supposed to be a lot of trees and stuff in front of this building, unfortunately, that was one of the thing that was.
Got kind of cut, but, I mean, you know, you want to see that, I really do, as people, I mean, all day long, there's people walking in and out of this building. You want it to be inviting, right now, like I said, to me, it's not inviting, it's just the building. You park your car, you walk straight in, there's nothing to keep people around or even go outside to hang out, talk, you know, you're talking this way right here and then you're gone. And like I said, I'm not here all day, I don't work here, you know, but when I do come and visit, it'd be nice to, to see that and other people to see it. I mean, it's, and we still wanted to make people feel at home when they, when they show up, even if they're going to get yelled at for a while, but, but feel at home, you know, you want to feel that you're at home, you want to be able to, like I said, it's beautiful, I like this, I really do, I really do like that it's inviting now.
I think with the two buildings and, and the connections that we are exploring right now, it's going to be a very nice building and very inviting.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Mr. Ayu, I'm sorry.
So, a quick, a quick comment. My, my comment on, in reference to the architecture, and I'm not an architect, if you all can continue to keep in mind, you know, UTEP Wynn for many years, every time there was a new president or a new architect, they put up a new building and it looked totally different and it was a mismatch of, of buildings everywhere and Dr. Nataliso hung in there so long, she tried to standardize that and it's a very nice campus. And when we're building schools and we're adding to buildings, we did, we've talked about this when we added the Science Labs to Mountwood, are those buildings complementary to the campus or not? And so, I realize we're just looking at a, at a rendering here, but if you all could look at that, I don't know if something to this building or over some time, we'll have to do something to this building to make it a better complement, because this building, you know, it will start showing his age as far because of sun abuse and other things and, and then maybe once you do the layout and the sidewalks and, and do these awnings and if we, we match some of these things, do we put a coat of paint on this building or do it's a color matching to the other building and so forth? I like the courtyard, I like the, the entrance, I like the ability for people to be able to walk in and out and have areas to conference. We need more training rooms, that's a given. I'm not sure about the parking because you're bringing 85 people, I counted the parking spaces on your schematic, you're accommodating the staff that he's bringing up and now we're going to have more classrooms, more training, we're definitely going to use the overflow parking. I, I don't know if we'll have money to, to pave that, but I don't think we have enough parking, we don't have enough parking today, so with us adding to this area, to this campus area, it's going to be a problem. So, so I'd like you all to kind of continue and maybe look at that a little bit more. I don't know if we can afford anything now or in the future, but yeah, just so that these things complement, because our buildings are here for 50 years and so, do, do they work with the, the existing architecture or do we put a coat of paint on this one or
Any other questions or comments?
Yes, Ms. Rodriguez, if I may add, yeah, I agree with Mr. Ganderah, these are wow factors, like it's a wow rendering and just for the audience and our community's reference, you know, we talk about the NOC and valuable data that's down in the warehouse, in a warehouse that is how old team and who knows?
1960ish.
1960ish, that's where the Socorro has these data, if that, something happens to that, it, we have major, major issues and they're at that warehouse by Serna, also the employees down there, so, you know, moving the NOC and those employees here, plus all the trainings that we have, you know, you, two Saturdays ago, over 300 people, on Saturday morning for the Water for Success are jam-packed, everyone together in that AB room, we're packed, everybody's just shoulder to shoulder. I think it was this week or last week, in this room, we had a lot, many people from EPCC Training, right? Was it at the board, it was jam-packed. We have region 19 HR individuals who come to this building from the entire region for trainings here, so there's a lot of activity and sometimes, many times, we have to send people, sorry, every room is booked, go down the street to Options High School and have trainings there, you know, going back to what Mr. Ganderah said, you know, when people visit this, this district, this facility, I could just visualize when it's the winter program that we have every year here, how that's going to look, you know, and, and so, it looks good and they don't continue to, to work on it and look forward to the final project.
Thank you, Dr. Espinoza. Thank you, Mr. Eington, Mr. Mesa. Next item on the agenda, STAR data info for Wynn students, Ms. McBane.
Good evening, Vice President Rodriguez, Dr. Espinoza and members of the board.
I didn't understand the charge. Okay, this presentation is an update on progress for students enrolled in the Wynn
Okay, so, the Wynn campuses for 2018, we're Bill Seibert, Butler, Campestre, Desert Wynn, Ernesto Serna, Escondridas, Hambrick, HD Hilli, Waco, Lujan Chavez, Mission Ridge, Purple Heart, Roja, Sierra Vista, Clark Middle, Sanchez, Socorro Middle, Sunridge and Socorro High School. Those are all campuses that had a Wynn program last year, the Wynn program started in 2015, 2016 with 10 campuses and have since increased to 19 campuses.
Excuse, are we supposed to have the PowerPoint on here?
It was, it was sent to.
So, we have the paper.
So, we're having some technical difficulty right now.
Rodriguez, you want to post-table this issue for a little bit and keep going and then come back to it, so they can set it up?
The, yeah, let's go ahead and do that, let's go ahead and wait for the presentation to be loaded and we can move on to consent agenda. Ms. McBane, if you, please don't go too far away, because you'll be up next. Okay, next item is consent agenda, are there any items that need to be pulled for further discussion?
Yes, ma'am, AF3, F3.
F3, anything else? F three, anything else?
Motion to approve excluding item A F three. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Nahara, seconded by Mr. Guerra, to approve consent agenda with the exception of F three. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. F three.
I don't have a question, I'm just gonna abstain.
Motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion was made by Mr. Nahara, seconded by Mr. Gandera, to approve item eight F three. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And I abstain, I work for the college.
And now are we ready for the presentation? Okay, Ms. McBane, you're up again.
Okay, thank you, I apologize for those technical difficulties. This is a presentation on the update of progress for students enrolled in the Wynn program. The campuses I read off a few moments ago, those were the campuses that have the Wynn program in effect for 2018.
Ms. McBane, I'm sorry, we still don't have it on our screens.
Okay.
It's coming. Is it on her screen? It goes in the audience, we've done that before. Do you have it on your screens?
Yes, there we go. All right, Ms. McBane, you're on, thank you, thank you for your patience.
Okay, so the Wynn campuses, they have a Wynn program in grades two through nine. So the data that I'm gonna be sharing with you is STAR data, students are tested with STAR data in grades three through nine. So this side up here is our reading data, so this is cohort information, it's 2018 Wynn students with their 2017 data. So, for example, a student that was in third grade in 2017, moved up to fourth grade in 2018, that's the data that's represented here. So in 2017, for reading, the different performance categories were Approaches, Meets, and Masters. So our Approaches grade level percentage went from 42% to 45% for 2018, so these are same students testing. So from 42 to 45 with an increase of three percentage points. Meets grade level from 7% to 12%, and Masters grade level from 1% to 3%. And I will tell you, the surprise increases there are at the Meets and Masters grade level, those are the higher performance levels for the STAR exams. And on this side is the math performance. You have the same type of comparison data, 2017 to 2018. You will see a greater change from this data, so Approaches in 2017 from 66% to 74%, same students, and 8% increase of passing rate. The Meets grade level performance, 18% to 27%. Masters grade level from 4% to 7%.
Ms. Rodriguez. Ms. McBane, I read these, and I know the data is very good, and I just have a little trouble understanding it, and maybe if you can clarify me in the early going, it'd be better. This is one of the slides I had a little bit of trouble, because the percentages don't equal 100%. So when I look at the 17 data, or I look at like the 18 data, is over 100%. Could you help me understand that a little bit?
Sure, the students that are at the Meets grade level, those students also meet at the Approaches grade level, so they're counted in there.
So there's duplicates.
Yes.
I see.
And then the Masters grade level, those students are also counted in the Meets and also Approaches grade level.
So all these are duplicates, thank you.
Yes, sir. So in that change column, you'll see the big changes for math, you have 8% gain for the Approaches grade level, 9% gain for Meets grade level, and 3% gain for Masters. Also included in this comparison is the Wynn daily, average daily attendance rate in comparison to our district average daily attendance rate. Our district rate is very good at 95.6, but you will notice that our Wynn data is almost a full percentage point higher at 96.59%. It's just a testament to the commitment that our students in this program and their parents have as part of this program. I do apologize for the technical difficulties, but if you have any questions?
For me?
Dr. Espinoza.
Ms. McBane, if you can go back to, I guess, the math slide. So, 'cause I know it's kind of, maybe kinda confusing to, sometimes this new T E A A B C formula, it's confusing for even educators, sometimes we don't fully understand it, but I'm pretty sure I understand, so I wanna take the time to explain this, and Ms. McBane, you stop me if I'm wrong. So you have Approaches, Meets, and Masters. So basically what this, the Approaches means that a child just passed, just met that standard, and to put it in simple terms, zero, on a scale from zero to 100, what's just passing? A 70, 71, maybe that child, he earned credit, 'cause he just passed, he met that Approaches. A Meets, hey, you passed, great job, maybe an 82, 83, 84. And then Masters, that's what we wanna shoot for in all of our students, not only our at-risk students, but our students who are high-flying, you know, they earned a 97, 98, they maybe missed two or three problems. So as you can see, our Approaches in 2017 in math, for our Wynn students, they were at 66%. Well, that same group jumped from 66 to 74%. So in other words, these third graders, they were now in fourth grade. Or the sixth graders this year, that was their last year result, in 2017. So as you can see, more of our Wynn students that met the Approaches were successful. This is comparing apples to apples. But also in the Meets, remember, the Meets is that, what would you say, a number, Ms. McBane, 80, 83, you know, just kinda try to simplify, went from 18 to 27%. And then, that higher level of achievement went from 4 to 7%. And so T E A came out with this new accountability rating, and again, it's very confusing, the formula that they use, but every school district in the state of Texas, school, every, school is using this Approaches, Meets, and Masters, and we stress to our educators, our teachers, our administrators, that we have to get kids to move to that Masters level, that's been the goal the entire time. And there you have at the end, the Meets, I mean, the change. So I just wanted to clarify that, just in case somebody, and I don't know if I did a good job or not, if I clarified, now we got Ms. McBane, somebody else who may wanna jump in. But we're proud of our Wynn students, they continue to work hard, have that I can do it attitude, and never give up, and as Ms. McBane shared on the next slide, the attendance, they have a higher attendance of attending school. So I can't thank our Wynn students, our amazing Wynn teachers who come in early, stay late, sacrifice family time for their personal family, so they do an outstanding, outstanding job. As a matter of fact, we have a meeting this Saturday, this Saturday at 8:00 in the morning, I'm excited to address them and talk to them, and this Saturday, 'cause I'm gonna share some good news with them that I'm pretty sure they'll like. We had a meeting about three weeks ago, four weeks ago, on a Saturday morning, and we asked them for feedback, comments, and I told them, don't write your name on it, 'cause I want you to be honest on how we can improve our Wynn academy, our Wynn program, and I read every single comment, so from their comments, we are making some changes, so we wanna share the news that we do listen to our awesome teachers, so looking forward to this Saturday morning.
Thank you, Dr. Espinoza, any other questions?
Ms. Rodriguez.
Mr. Ayub.
Ms. McBane, on the data, the information that you have, did we track the same students? What did you do with students that exit the program, or if we're looking third grade to fourth grade, we got a new fourth grader? Did you limit your stats, your statistical information to those third graders, we checked once, and now checking them as fourth graders? What did you do with people coming and going?
The students that are represented in this data are students that have 2017 scores also.
So it's the same ones?
Yes, it's the same students.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Ms. McBane. Next item on the agenda, new business, consider approval of local policy, E H D C to include resolution, and F F A C. Ms. Macias.
Vice President Rodriguez, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board, administration recommends consideration of approval of the revisions for local policy, E H D C to include resolution and F F A C as presented.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Mr. Ayub.
I'd like to make a motion here, but it'll be a split motion, because I'm okay with one policy, the other one I'd like the board to consider a change. I would like to make a motion that for policy, E H D C, including the resolution, that be postponed to a future meeting, so that we can get additional information, and then we'll have to take F F A C separate.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Ayub to move E H D C and to include resolution to a future meeting, seconded by Mr. Nahara. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, let's move that on to the next meeting, and F F A C.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion was made by Mr. Ayub, seconded by Mr. Nahara. Any further discussion?
No, ma'am.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. At this time, the meeting is to be closed for consultation with legal counsel to discuss personnel and real estate matters, to receive and discuss the recommendation of administration to terminate the term contract of S. Quintero, teacher at Escondrias Elementary School for good cause, to consider superintendent's evaluation instrument and timeline to conduct evaluations of internal auditors for curriculum and instruction and finance, and to consider administrative recommendations for principal and assistant principal positions at various campuses, and director of bilingual education under Texas Government Code Sections 551.071, 551.072, and 551.074. The time is 7:25. Good evening, we are back in session at 10:12 PM. New business, discussion and possible action regarding proposal to terminate the term contract for S. Quintero for good cause. Mr. Blanco.
Thank you, Vice President Rodriguez, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. Steve Blanco, legal counsel for the district, in closed session, I outlined the issues regarding the employment of Mr. Quintero, the teacher at Escondrias Elementary School, and it is based on conduct and a recent issue, the recommendation that you authorize the administration to issue appropriate notice for the proposed termination of the term contract of Mr. Quintero for good cause and the reasons discussed in closed session.
So move. Second.
Motion was made by Mr. Nahara, seconded by Mr. Ayub, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blanco. Consider approval of superintendent's evaluation instrument and timeline.
Motion to approve.
Motion was made by Mr. Ayub, seconded by Mr. Gonzalez, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion passes. Consider approval and evaluation of internal auditors for, the first one would be curriculum and instruction.
Second.
Motion was made by Mr. Gonzalez, seconded by Mr. Nahara, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Approval, consider approval of evaluation for internal auditor for finance.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion was made by Mr. Ayub, seconded by Mr. Gonzalez, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Consider approval of administrative recommendations, Dr. Espinoza. The first one is principal for Jane Hambrick.
Yes. Vice President Rodriguez, members of the board, administration recommends Ms. Joanne Anguiano to assume the roles and the responsibilities as the principal of Jane Hambrick.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion was made by Mr. Guerra, seconded by Mr. Nahara, any further discussion?
Second was by Mr. Gandera.
Well, no, no, well, you. Whatever, doesn't matter.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I did.
Did you?
I did.
Are you sure?
I did.
Just making sure?
It's late, let's get out of here. We got some principals to announce. All those opposed? Motion carries, congratulations, Ms. Anguiano. Second, principal of Sergeant Roberto Ituarte Elementary School, Dr. Espinoza.
Yes, Vice President Rodriguez, members of the board, administration recommends Ms. Lynette Vidalis to assume all the roles and the responsibilities as principal at Ituarte Elementary.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion was made by Mr. Nahara, seconded by Mr. Gonzalez, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries, congratulations, Ms. Vidalis. Next, assistant principal for Keys Academy, Dr. Espinoza.
Yes, Vice President Rodriguez, members of the board, administration recommends Mr. Luis Carrillo to assume all the roles and responsibilities as assistant principal of Keys Academy.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion was made by Mr. Ayub, seconded by Mr. Nahara, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, congratulations, Mr. Carrillo. Dr. Espinoza, Sierra Vista Elementary School.
Yes, Vice President Rodriguez, members of the board, administration is pulling this item from the agenda.
All right, William D. Slider Middle School, Dr. Espinoza.
Yes, Vice President Rodriguez, members of the board, administration recommends Ms. Lorena Martinez to assume all the roles and the responsibilities as the new assistant principal at Slider Middle School.
Motion to approve, second.
Who said it first?
Oh, me.
Mr. Ayub?
Yes, that's right.
Motion was made by Mr. Ayub, seconded by Mr. Guerra, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, congratulations, Ms. Martinez. Dr. Espinoza, director of bilingual education.
Yes, Vice President Rodriguez, members of the board, administration is pulling this item from the agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Espinoza. With that being said, there is no further business of this Board of Trustees, the meeting is adjourned at 10:17.